Before we begin, if we could have just a moment of silence for Jerry Piensen, one of our fallen soldiers up in Hackensack, New Jersey, who recently passed away.
Thank you. So, welcome all. My name is Ryan Milton from here in Philadelphia. And as you see here today, today, but beyond today, is the time to act. And I'm very excited that we're having this in Philadelphia today because Philadelphia, but the nation was the temple of liberty and the beacon of hope for the world. And Lyndon LaRouche and our six candidates from around the nation insist that it become so again today. And I'll introduce you to two of them. And one of the science advisors, sort of our skunk works maybe, or our basement team, our black box operation, but it is the key to the whole thing. However, this question of the temple of liberty is something that is forgotten. And by way of introduction, I want to give you at least a glimpse of where that really did come from. So, if you want to just put up the first slide, this is the cover of our latest EIR magazine, Executive Intelligence Review, which has been printed since before I was born. That's all you need to know on that. But in 1859, while Abraham Lincoln was on the campaign trail, he was in Iowa, and he met with this young man, 29-year-old surveyor by the name of Grenville Dodge. And the question that was pressing for 30 years on Americans' minds was, what was the best route for the transcontinental railroad? That up to this point, it had been debated. In fact, it had been known that in England, while the railroad supposedly began there, that nothing had changed over 30 years. Lincoln proposed that the mission to create a continental nation from sea to shining sea, from our northern border to our southern border, was going to happen, it was going to happen with railroads. This gentleman, does anybody know who this gentleman is here? And I know we have New Yorkers here, but people in this state should know, this was the wartime governor during the Civil War of Pennsylvania, Andrew Curtin, who organized the governors of Pennsyl-- well, governors of the United States who were loyal to the Union, specifically to supply the Union. The key element, however, is this period from 1869 to 1872, when he was ambassador. And I think this is a good way to give you the idea of this mission that I'm describing. When Ulysses S. Grant became president, Andrew Curtin was appointed as ambassador to Russia. And at the toast in New York, General Joshua Owen made a very specific kind of statement. I'll just read you some elements of it. He said, "War does not satisfy our national longings. The tremendous energy which it awakens may gratify us, but we lament the exertion of so much power to the accomplishment of so much evil. And by instinct, purely American, we devise means of putting this energy to some practical use. We stand on the shores of the Pacific and cast wistful eyes over its expanse of water to see if any kindred people will join us in girding the globe with a tramway of iron, over which shall pass the commerce of the world. We say to the nations, though we are the youngest born of you all, yet we have discovered the true glory is only to be obtained through the performance of great deeds which tend to advance civilization, develop the material wealth of peoples, and make permanent the principles of truth and justice." He said then, "Who are the natural allies in the old world in the prosecution of this grand design? Not the English, for they are our commercial rivals; not the French, for they are jealous of our democratic institutions. The Prussians, well, we have nothing in common, except perhaps our common dislike of the overreaching influence of France and England. Russia and America are allies by the inevitable law of interest. The Russians have become simultaneous with us, the champions of freedom by emancipating their slaves. And the Emperor Alexander and President Abraham Lincoln stand together upon the noblest pedestal with which fame has ever constructed. However much common origin, common language, and common religion, or some grand sentiment may unite peoples, the greatest bond is a community of interest and identity of destiny." So, that was immediately the principle of why the Russians sent two fleets to our San Francisco shores and to New York during the Civil War, to protect us from the influence of the French and the British on the side of the Southern Confederacy. Because the experiment of this nation was going to spread around the world. And Andrew Curtin was the one to bring that idea even further into Russia, and then later into the US Congress. Ah, but this was sort of the pinnacle of the proof that the American system could, in fact, function, was the 1876 Centennial Exposition. This was the key element to show that yet, though 100 years, as William Kelly, Pig Iron Kelly said in the Congress, 100 years prior, we could not make anything, we were not allowed to produce what we wanted to, we could not mine, we could not manufacture, we could not produce a nail without approval of the king, that yet, 100 years later, we could put on display for the world that America had become a developed nation to rival all nations of the planet. That was the theme of the exposition. And it was also a center where people from around the world came to Pennsylvania, came to Philadelphia, to join the conspiracy to develop the world. Thomas Edison's collaborator, Emile Ratunau from Germany, who took the patents for the electric light bulb to Germany to electrify all of Europe. Dmitri Mendeleev from Russia, who's not pictured, is Emperor Dom Pedro of Brazil, who was the personal guest of President Ulysses S. Grant. They started the coreless engine in the bottom, which powered the entire facility, all the machines, all of the works. And as the Chinese delegate leader, Li Guoji said, he said that the centennial exhibition was not a mere assemblage of curiosities to simply dazzle the senses. He said that rather, there was an intention to increase knowledge. He took this back to China, as the delegates from Japan took this back to Japan. And in fact, they had already come, as you'll see shortly in the next slide. I think it's the next slide. Ah, okay, well, let me jump to this. This is a wonderful picture. This is Ulysses S. Grant in China, meeting with one of the key collaborators of China, who worked with the Russian government under Count Sergei Vitto, the finance minister, to build the Trans-Siberian Railroad, to build the Eastern China Railroad. The viceroy, Li Hongzhang, was also contacted many times by another student of the American system, Sun Yat-sen, who became the founder of modern China, who studied in Hawaii from the circles of Abraham Lincoln. Grant toured the world after his presidency to take the mission of the exposition, the mission of fighting the British, the mission of developing the world. He took that on a world tour, and that was his message. Join with America, and the colonial past will cease. So, I think this is a beautiful picture. Basically, this is, I think this was in the Chinese press. This was the first map that I know of, of the, what we would call today, the Eurasian Land Bridge. One of the collaborators of the circles of Lincoln and Henry Clay was the governor of Colorado, Gilpin was his name. And what he said is, in fact, this is important, definitely, for us here today. He said that "The idea forced itself more and more upon my mind of a widely extended railway system. The system should not only traverse the North American continent from sea to sea, but should continue the course north and west across the Strait of Bering and across Siberia to connect with the railways of Europe and all of the world. In the consummation of the grand scheme of a cosmopolitan railway will be forged another link in the great chain of progress. It was reserved for man alone, for the elevation of mind and the immortality of intelligence, thus to transmit the cinders and waste material of this world into fine gold which ministers to human culture." As Count Sergei Vitto, the finance minister of Russia, said, "We must give the country such industrial perfection as has been reached by the United States of America, which firmly bases its prosperity on the pillars of agriculture and industry." He said, "The railroad is like a leaven which creates a cultural fermentation among the population. Even if it passed through an absolutely wild people along its way, it would raise them in a short time to the level requisite for its operation." The Trans-Siberian Railroad itself was built in the United States. You had Carnegie and Maryland Steel Companies, they supplied the rails. Baldwin Locomotives here in Pennsylvania, they supplied the trains working daily, even it was actually four hours, four shifts every day. The Press Steel Cars were built. Westinghouse, New York firms, Sparrow Point Bridges, everything was made in the United States and sent to the world. That is the idea that we had then, which would have continued, and this would have been built then, but for World War I, World War II, the hand of the British Empire. We're in a similar situation today, which we're faced with great crises, both financial and potentially beyond that. And what we have launched is to revive this mission. And here today, we have some of our candidates, which I will introduce to you, to give you the modified version of this plan, much advanced, beyond, in fact, into the solar system, into maybe outer space beyond that. First, what I would like to do is introduce for you Diane Sayre, who is a candidate for Congress in northern New Jersey against the very pro-imperial, anti-constitutional Scott Garrett. And she has some things to say to you immediately.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. Many years ago, I was an exchange student in Sweden, and it was northern Sweden, where no one spoke any English, and people did things the old-fashioned way. And my host mother insisted that all of the bread consumed in the house, she would bake, which wasn't a bad thing. And you can imagine walking in and smelling that fresh oatmeal molasses bread with the nice crusty crust and the warm inside that melts the butter, and you take a bite and it drips down your chin, and it's just great. Now, who here likes to eat? And not only do you like to eat, but have you thought about what would happen if we ran out of food? Because for a billion people on the planet right now, this is not a hypothetical question. In fact, you can imagine in this room, if you want to know what the planet looks like, it would be one out of six people in this room malnourished. And we've reached the point where failure to act by us here and by other Americans will mean not only a continuation of mass unemployment, mass foreclosures, but now we are actually threatened with the conditions of a dark age, with starvation on a massive scale, and its partner, which is disease, that will affect the planet as a whole. Now, what I wanted to look at is this map. What's happening? Okay. Anyway, thank you. You can see, the white areas are the areas of the United States where you have a normal level of precipitation. That's not very much. The dark blue is where you have up to 200% more rain than normal, and the reddish brown is where you have no rain. In Texas right now, up to half a million head of cattle are about to be slaughtered. That's 10% of the herd, because they have no land to graze on. There's no food for them. In Iowa, which has, here it looks a little brown, but it's actually been underwater, there's no corn. And so, the poultry and pigs and so on are going to be fed with wheat instead of corn, and who knows what kind of effect that's going to have. And what you have on top of that is speculators like George Soros saying, "Well, since we're going to have all this disruption of the food supply, this would be a great moment, since we're printing all this money for these bailouts, to actually start speculating on the price of food." So, the price of wheat in the last year went up by over 73%. If there's anyone here whose income went up by 73%, please raise your hand, so we can talk to you after this meeting. It doesn't work for mankind. So, what you have is a crisis where it's becoming harder and harder for people to make ends meet, and you have the speculators figuring out more and more ways to crush and loot the population. And some of you may know that Prince Philip, who Ryan was joking about earlier, who may be over in the reptilian exhibit here, actually said he wanted to be reincarnated as a deadly virus to do something about overpopulation. I think someone should tell him he already is a deadly virus. At any rate, so what's happened? A group of prominent food producers wrote a very reasonable letter, a little bit too polite for our standards, but nonetheless, they wrote a letter to the Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Vilsack, with a number of very moderate proposals, one of which is to stop producing ethanol, to, "We need the corn, we need the food, so just cut out the ethanol." There's 30 million acres of farmland that have been set aside, that have been taken out of production. We should bring some of that land back into production, given that we have this emergency. And that farmers who have received insurance payments for crops that were destroyed by floods or fire, whatever, should be allowed, which they're normally not, but they should be allowed to plant something else, a short-term whatever, just to supplement what we know are going to be huge shortfalls. What was the response from the US Secretary of Agriculture to this emergency? Nothing. No response. Not interested. Which brings me to why we are here today. We're here because we are facing a civilizational crisis. And in the last 40 years, there's one person who has accurately warned about what was going to happen every step of the way, and produced volumes upon volumes of programmatic material about what to do about this, and that is Lyndon LaRouche. Now, LaRouche just turned 89. And unlike Strom Thurmond and some other people I can think of, he did not think it was appropriate to run for president at that age. So, he recruited six of us. We're up here on the screen, you can see, some are in California, some are Shields, myself in New Jersey, Bill Roberts in Michigan, Rachel Brown, who is here with us today from Massachusetts, Dave Christie in Washington State, and Keisha Rogers in Texas. And the idea of this is not to try and propitiate or suck up to Wall Street, which really isn't going to exist much longer, to do something in January of 2013, but to provide a certain kind of political leadership for the nation now, because the crisis is now, and we have to save the republic now. And the truth of the matter is that our political enemies are completely bankrupt. Some of you may know that Geithner went over to Poland to try and impose on Europe the Obama hyperinflationary bailout plan. Obama had promised Merkel when she was here that the US Federal Reserve would be the lender of last resort for the euro, which is appropriately bankrupt. And what he did was he walked into their conference, which apparently got them quite angry already. Normally, you might expect a call from the US on the phone or something, but he went in and he said, "Look, I have a plan. You guys need 4 trillion euros, and you only have 440 billion euros. What you're going to do is the US is going to open a window, and we'll have a swap. We'll give you dollars for the euros, but we're going to leverage it 10 to 1. So, the US will shell out $6 trillion for 440 billion euros." That sounds great to me. And the Europeans wisely enough rejected it. They said, they're getting a little smarter. They said that this would be hyperinflationary. So, it may be that the love affair that many of the European governments have had with Barack Obama has ended. The other thing that's ended is the love affair of certain American voters with Obama. People may have seen what happened in former Congressman Weiner's district in New York, where the Republican that Weiner had resoundingly defeated, won the election by campaign. This is a Democratic district. This was Senator Schumer's district before he was a senator. This is totally Democratic. They elected a Republican. And they elected a Republican because he made the issue a referendum against Obama. So, Obama's in a lot of trouble, and so is the economy. The IMF is meeting in Washington, there's a lot of things going on, it's the beginning of the new fiscal year. And various quotes we've picked up, which are not really indicative of a recovery, are things like, "All signs of panic are there." "We need squillions of dollars." I don't know what that is, but I think Geithner came up with it. "We need a broader firewall." This is already a raging panic. Doesn't sound like a recovery. So, obviously, under these circumstances, it's totally catastrophic to have a president who has a Hitler-Nero-type failed personality. And when Obama was crashing and burning with this Weiner election and so on, what do the Democrats do? Do they take the opportunity and say, "Okay, let's get this albatross off our neck and get him out of there and do something else?" No. They decide that they're going to launch a campaign against Rick Perry to stop him from becoming president. Well, Rick Perry is pretty bad, but he's not the president right now, Obama is. It's like the people who go around attacking Bush and Cheney. I mean, Bush, I thought, was the stupidest president we ever had. He probably still is the stupidest president we ever had, but not the worst, thanks to Obama. But Obama is in office right now. Not any of these other people, and he's the problem, and he is clearly committed, absolutely committed, to the destruction of the United States. And then what do you have on the Republican side? Are they calling for Obama's removal? No. They want Obama to stay in office, because that way, if the country manages to somehow survive with no food, no energy, no jobs, and everybody homeless, if we can somehow make it through to have an election where no one has an address from which to register to vote, maybe a Republican will get in the White House. So, as you might have gathered, what we're finding is that most people are pretty disgusted with both parties. Party politics has failed. And that is the point of the six of us running, is to provide a certain kind of leadership. We are Democrats nominally, but it's really, in a sense, has nothing to do with party whatsoever. We have to find the patriots and mobilize to save the nation. So, as you know, the first item on our platform is the removal of Obama from office, or at least paralyzing him with a nice impeachment vote, or something that inhibits him from being able to destroy the country in the remaining months he has left. Then we have to get the Glass-Steagall Act reinstated, which I presume most people are familiar with on some level. It's a separation of commercial banking from investment banking, so that we can actually have credit, we can have a solvent commercial banking system to do what is actually required, which is to express our creativity by developing the biosphere. So, we're back to the first map. And you can see from this that probably water management would make sense for our nation. It's not that we have a shortage of water. As people from this area know, in New Jersey, in the wake of Hurricane Irene, we actually had a lot of water in this area, but then you have massive fires in Texas and Arizona. So, the question is, how do you develop the nation so that the water is distributed in such a way for the maximum good of the population? And that's why the North American Water and Power Alliance, one of the reasons that this is totally urgent. And I would say that you can be much more optimistic maybe than you were if you were here in the 60s, when it was canceled, because now, if we don't do it, we may just starve to death. So, here is Nwapa. And you can see, it's hard for me to read these little things, but up in the top, where you have numbers 1, 2, and 3, you have about 25% of the rainfall of the whole continent in that little area. And what happens with most of that water now is it just runs off the mountains, it goes into the Pacific, or goes into the Arctic Ocean. It's very good fresh water, and it doesn't get to be used for anything. So, what we're proposing is you divert 20% of that into a massive series of reservoirs, dams, tunnels, canals. You can see it goes all the way down to Mexico, it goes all the way over to the Great Lakes. This is a very exciting project. It was conceived by the Parsons Group, the people who built the Hoover Dam. And it was nearly built in '64, and I think the events surrounding the assassination of President Kennedy, the drive for the Vietnam War, the thing was just, and the emergence of the environmentalist movement are what prevented this from being built at the time. Doing this would add an amount of farmland total to the land area of the state of Washington. One of the dams in it, the Chitna Dam, is 1,700 feet tall. That's 700 feet taller than the largest dam in the world right now. To give you a sense of how much water would be stored in these reservoirs, you're talking about 4.4 billion acre-feet of water. Lake Mead is 38 million acre-feet of water, so you can think about the magnitude. The Rocky Mountain Trench, which is on there, is that number 6? Yeah, looks about where it is. Okay, the Rocky Mountain Trench is 500 miles long. I don't think there's, there might be one little village in there we have to move. But we're going to fill it with water, and it'll hold 520 million acre-feet of water. One of the tunnels in Idaho, and Idaho is going to have a whole bunch of tunnels and lifts, because Idaho is the top of this project, the Sawtooth Mountains. There's going to be a reservoir up there, 5,200 feet above sea level. One of the tunnels involved in that is going to be 50 miles long and 100 feet in diameter. So, you begin to get an idea of the scale of this. Here's the Sawtooth Mountains. So, and you can think of the challenges this poses, because so much of this project, it starts in Alaska, you're going to be dealing with ice, you're going to be dealing with freezing temperatures. I mean, it's a massive, massive, massive challenge to human creativity and science to actually build this. So, the reservoir here is going So, the reservoir here is going to be fifty-two-hundred-and-fifty feet above sea level. And in order to get the water up there, what you're going to need are a bunch of... The original plan called for using hydroelectric power, but that was the sixties. We now have these really nice modular nuclear power plants. And it turns out, the GE Prism is also what's called an IFR, Integral Fast Reactor, which means that the coolant is liquid sodium. It's a very, very high temperature, which means that what you call today nuclear waste, that everyone's all hysterical about how we're burying everywhere, that is the fuel. And we already have, I was told by one scientist that Ryan and I met with recently, that we have enough so-called waste to have fuel for these type of plants for a thousand years at current levels of consumption. Now, I would propose that we use it up really quickly, because I think we need to consume a lot more energy and build a lot more things. So, maybe it'll only last a hundred years or two-hundred years. But at any rate, there is no shortage of energy. These plants are extremely safe. They can't physically melt down. And we need twenty-six-thousand megawatts of energy to get that water up into the Sawtooth Mountain reservoir. So, we're going to build these power plants. Let's see here. Yeah. Here. These are some of the other things that we're going to need. Lots of concrete, millions and millions of cubic yards. And just to give you a sense, the Hoover Dam has four-point-three-six-million cubic yards of concrete. That would be, if you built a highway from New York City to San Francisco, that was sixteen feet wide. That's how much concrete is in the Hoover Dam. Now, think about what we're talking about and how much concrete you're going to need for this thing. Okay? Next. Steel, hundreds of millions of tons. I don't have any kind of metric. I don't know. It's a lot. And the same with copper, aluminum, all of the materials for this. Next. This is delightful. That is a gigantic drill bit. Okay? And I was trying to figure out how this... I'm sure what you have to do, if you're going to drill a hole that's that big, is you have to start the drill moving before you put it in the rock. But anyway, I mean, this is totally exciting. And you can imagine, for these water projects, you're talking about things a hundred feet in diameter. You're talking about things that are larger than the tunnels we have into New York and things like that. Imagine what happens when we build the Bering Strait Tunnel. I mean, and what that's going to look like. This is just totally exciting. And then, you have all these kinds of really fun machines to move dirt. Okay? All kinds of things. And we're going to need a lot of them, and we're going to need them in all different places. And again, there are a lot of challenges, because the terrain is difficult. A lot of this is through rock. A lot of it is in cold climates. It's going to be a huge challenge. Now, we're going to look at Idaho for a second, because people here in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York can begin to think about what we're going to have to do. Idaho is a great state. I've never been there. I don't think it has all that many people in it. And while they do have some great nuclear laboratories, see those railroad lines? Stanley, which I put in big letters there in the middle, Stanley is where the Sawtooth Mountains are. There's nothing there. In other words, we have... We're talking about getting all this concrete, all these drill bits, all these machines, everything. We've got to get them to the places where we're going to do the most building. So, that requires a rail system. And some estimates are that we're going to have to spend as much as five years building rail, just to be able to build the project, because you have to have the means to get what you're building with to the places where you need to build it. And I was thinking, I don't know, from experience, obviously, what it was like to build the Hoover Dam and Lake Mead, but that part of the country was pretty desolate. There wasn't much there. So, you can imagine, the idea of building this thing, you had to build cities, you had to get transport. It was just a massive growth driver of the whole country. Now, who is going to do this? The unemployed young people. And unemployed many people. Right now, we have massive youth unemployment, anywhere from nineteen to forty-five percent, if you take the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. And a lot of younger people are a mess. They spend way too much time on computers. They don't have social skills. They don't teach science in the schools anymore, because there is no science in the economy. Well, we're going to have to take a lot of these young people and send them to Idaho. And we're going to have them work under some of the older, tough guys in the Army Corps of Engineers. It'll be like the CCC. And we're going to need, to build Nwapa, the nuclear plants and so on, we're going to need about seven million skilled workers. And as you can imagine, from... The degree of skill varies massively, from things that are not that complicated to things that are very complicated. So, there's work for everybody on this. And obviously, I would just... Well, you'll see there's more. But just in terms of the United States, you saw the map, you saw where it is. Do you think, in New Jersey, where we have floods, even if it rains a half an inch, because we're in a swamp, do you think people are going to put up with that if we're building Nwapa? In other words, the entire nation will change, because what people find acceptable, acceptable conditions, they're going to say, "This is not acceptable. Why should we live like this? We're building, you know, we're going to pump water up to fifty-two-hundred feet above sea level, and we can't solve a flood in a swamp in New Jersey? That's stupid." Right? So, the whole country is going to be transformed by virtue of taking a national mission, which is a challenge. Now, what is going to happen, once you start this and you start building all these railroads, is the obvious, which Ryan mentioned earlier, which is that the obvious thing, if you're doing a lot of work in Alaska, is you're going to have to cross over to Siberia. And Putin, LaRouche commented this morning, that we got some surprising good news, which I guess Medvedev is sort of stepping aside. And Putin is almost assuredly going to be the next president of Russia. He's prime minister now. Putin is a gigantic promoter of this Bering Strait Tunnel. In fact, he doesn't even care that we have an idiot in the White House and we're not building it. He's already building their side. They're building the railroads. They're moving. Siberia is a really gigantic challenge. We'll get to that in a second. I just would also say, is you can see from these rail links, that once you have this link, what you're opening up is Russia, China, and people take for granted, why should we take it for granted that China just produces cheap things and exports them to the US? What if we were working, as Ryan was discussing, with China and Russia in a massive partnership? First of all, that's an enormous amount of land area. Second of all, the United States has a unique culture, because of our revolution, because of what we represent. There's a reason why we built the first transcontinental railroad. We were the first to land on the moon. And if you get a driver from here, it's going to inspire the world. And what would happen, if you do this, is the thing would reverse. We would begin exporting to China, so that they can develop the heartland of their country. And it would force a reverse of the free trade system, which is where everyone competes for the lowest possible starvation wage. And instead, the idea would be, no, you can be more productive if your workers are well-paid, well-educated, have health care. That is also a spiral going upward, and that's what this thing would generate. Now, let's look at Siberia, because this is really fun. That's one picture. That's probably the middle of July or something. There's a Russian proverb, which I cannot completely remember the story, but something about Santa Claus. He had an accident, and he emptied his bag, and it all landed in Siberia, which is that they have... They're very, very rich in raw materials. They just have massive mineral wealth, and no one can get at it, because it's all under permafrost. Now, look at this. This map, that purple area over there is Siberia. And the darkest part, that's under five-hundred meters of permafrost. Okay? And it goes, the warmest areas are only a hundred meters of permafrost. There are towns here where the average temperature is minus forty degrees for the year. Okay? I mean, this is obviously a real challenge. And if you figured out how to build here, because you realize, if you're building rail, if people notice, like, an inch of rain is about ten inches of snow. Right? The water has a very different size. If you've ever frozen water in the freezer in a glass or something, and it cracks, you're dealing with a... So, think about building on permafrost, which sometimes is going to be melted and sometimes is going to be frozen, or do you do everything underground? I mean, these are just enormous challenges, which is why the place has not yet been developed, and why it would be a perfect joint project for the US, Russia, and China, is the development of this area. So, the development of Siberia would be a stepping stone to figuring out how to colonize another planet. And people would definitely be thinking that way, if they had to spend any time out there, I think. Okay? Next. Now, the other place where you have extreme conditions is the continent of Africa. And I'm going to show you a video, which deals with some of this. But you have desert like crazy. And then you have the green, you have these rich, green rainforests, you have extreme dryness, extreme humidity. And when you have these kinds of clashing weather, you know, differences, you get changes in the air. People know this, about how you get thunderstorms, how you get hurricanes. You get different temperatures, different degrees of humidity, and you get, like, a storm system generated. So, developing the continent of Africa would have a great stabilizing effect on weather. Also, the obvious thing is, why should you have the greatest number of people starving to death in a continent like that? I mean, that is an absolute outrage. In some areas, I think in Sudan, you have something like ten feet of topsoil. It's the richest farmland anywhere in the world. So, the idea that it's somehow acceptable to have a continent, because Prince Philip wants the gold and diamonds and thinks there's too many people, should just be exterminated, is totally unacceptable. And one of the ways that we will be judged by future generations is whether we allowed this continent to be depopulated or not. Now, what we're proposing for this is a project known as Trans-Aqua. This is part of it. But you can see, it affects a very, very large area. Similar idea, you're moving water into areas that are dry. Lake Chad is a famous one for people who know it's just been drying up and shriveling up to nothing. I don't know if there's even any water there, like a puddle, at this point. But it's a crucial area for agriculture, for that whole region. So, you can look on the little map over there, and you can see just this one large project, which affects a huge amount of the continent and greatly moderate the climate as well. So, now, if you want to go to the video.
Nwapa restores the water balance of the United States, so we don't have a food shortage. It just also reverses the long depletion of water resources of the Western Plains, for example. We have been drawing down the water reserves of the Western Plain by pumping, without putting anything back in to restore those water supplies. The control of weather through the control of water in this mechanism. For example, we had recently a case where we had, first, a massive flood of water accumulated in a basin defined by the Ohio, Mississippi, and Missouri rivers. That area is still affected by this. There are some parts that are immune, but in general, the entire area is affected. So, therefore, you have two questions. The water supply of the Western Plains, in general. You have the recent flooding problem in the north of the United States, going into Canada. You have also the vast drought, which hit subsequently in the summer, spring and summer months of this year, in another part, southern part of the United States. So, what Nwapa will do, among other things, will create a water balance, balancing system, to a system of canals, other connections, which bring the entire water system of that part of Canada, the United States, and northern Mexico, into a system with an augmented amount of water. Because Nwapa will mean an augmentation of the sheer mass of water available. It also means, with the distribution system, a minimization of the mis-deployment of the available water supplies.
As LaRouche discussed in the weekly report, we can deal with these extreme threats of drought and flooding with Nwapa. Nwapa will create the type of water-balancing system that not only distributes water evenly for our needs, but will be part of the newitic balancing and tempering of the planet that's consistent with a progressive evolutionary process. We could say that we have to help nature to bring herself into harmony. We've come a long way since the old Earth days of a hot, acrid environment, where oceans were too hot to swim in, volcanoes dominated the terrain, and the low-oxygen atmosphere only supported very simple forms of life. Then, the advent of green plant life began to temper the Earth's climate, distributing water to dry regions and cooling them, making them more suitable for animal and plant life. Trees moisten the air, and roots help to create soil that further sustain plant life. The greening of these land areas further tempered the climate by bringing more rain. Deserts produce thinner, weaker clouds, or even none at all, while, over densely wooded areas, thick rainy clouds are formed. While plants prepared the way, humans have a much greater potential to aid these plants in the distribution of water than they do themselves. Furthermore, this tempering of the system by a more even distribution of water equalizes extreme temperatures and mitigates severe weather. Extreme weather is caused by the convergence of opposite temperature, pressure, and moisture conditions. So, for example, a front may be formed when a cool, dry air mass meets a warm, moist air mass. The extremes of the hot, dry Sahara Desert, converging with the cooler, rainy, and green equatorial region of Africa, including the cool Gulf of Guinea, converge to create a wind stream called the African Easterly Jet over the Sahel. This system forms what are called African Easterly Waves, long waves that move with the trade winds from Africa across the Atlantic. Similarly, the convergence of the extreme wet monsoon southwesterlies with dry northeasterlies is proposed to generate West African squall lines. These are chains of thunderstorms, hundreds of miles long, which are the largest and rainiest systems observed over land. The coincidence of these systems is thought to be the cause of most, if not all, Atlantic hurricanes. But, human intervention to harmonize water on two continents through the greening of the Sahara and the construction of Nwapa would no doubt have a major impact on the climate. So, as plants and animal life began the work to temper these extreme conditions on Earth, human beings must continue it.
And before we continue, I just want to say that Natalie is here. Natalie, you should say hello. Stand up. So, you can bombard her with questions afterwards. Wanted to make sure you knew what she looked like. In closing, what I hope will be the result of your having joined us here today, is that you begin to think from the standpoint of many generations in the future. And to look at the world as from a distance like this, this is from the top of the world, looking down, to think about it this way. And that, by thinking in that way, all of us can commit ourselves to arriving at that better place in the future, which will guide our actions in the present. Thank you.